I couldn't get my gun.
I can't either. I just want to look. The way I see it.
I'm not sure what's more important. I think, I think. I think I've tried it enough now, but it's a lot.
No.
You know that I'm.
They just want to show me. Oh, no. I watched this game.
Did you get hardcover?
I don't see it.
That's it? Okay.
The best thing she's ever been in.
I'll now call the June 4th, 2018 meeting of the Alexander County Board of Education to order. If you will, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. I'd like to invite Zachary Zirkle to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Zachary is the son of Vincent and Michelle Zirkle. He is a fifth grader at Sugarloaf Elementary.
Attention, so we pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thanks, Zachary. Board members, you've had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to approve this printed?
So may.
Zachary.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any notes? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move to our honors and recognitions, and I'll call Dr. Jennifer Hefner.
Thank you Chairman Bowman and Board members. It's always my pleasure to present the honors and recognitions portion of the board meeting each month. Tonight, we're going to be recognizing several groups. Our high school fast pitch softball team, essay winners, and mathematics tournament winners. And because they received the latest invitation, we're going to start with the girls softball team. I know that several of them have some commitments, and they didn't even know about the meeting until today because they didn't win the state championship until Saturday evening. So we have put together some things for this evening's recognition, but I would ask that Bridgette Ryan and Marty Pennell come and help. We are going to be presenting each player with a yellow long skin robe and certificate. And before we get started, if Joanna Crew is here, is she here anywhere? She is our athletics director, and she does an amazing job. I unfortunately had made plans about six months ago to go to a 30th anniversary party in Maryland. So on Friday, as I was traveling, I called Coach Adkins, and I wished the team the very best. I hate that I couldn't be there because I do love me some Alexander County softball, and football, and lots of other ball. But I talked to Coach Adkins, and just we had a great brief conversation. But when the game started on Friday, Coach Crew, her job was to keep me informed of how the team was doing. And honestly, my phone, we were blowing it up because she would tell me everything from the weather delays, that we were up two to zero. I mean, she kept me informed just about every inning. Well, I have to tell you, I thought she was messing with me just a little bit on Saturday when we were behind at one point, and I got a little nervous, and I did a little go A.C., you know, dance, all that sort of thing. My friends that I was with, they thought that I had lost it. But, and then the tables turned a bit, and we took the lead. And, well, no, excuse me, we tied it. We tied it. And so she's giving me inning by inning by inning, okay? We get to the 11th inning, the bottom of the 11th inning, with two outs, and there is a strike of lightning, and we go on yet another weather delay. And I thought she was messing with me, and I all but bit my nails and just carried on terribly. But when she notified me that we had won, that was a very proud moment because it has been four years since we won our last state championship. And because of the talents of this team, and the coaches, and the hard work that has gone into this season, they were able to bring the 10th state championship for Alexander Central back to this county Saturday evening. So that's pretty big stuff, to have 10 state championships. And I just appreciate Coach Adkins and his coaching staff. We will recognize you separately. But we're going to start with young ladies, and we're going to start with Alexis Biggs. Please come forward. And Alexis, we're going to try to squeeze all of you into one picture. So stay up here. Tara Chatham. Number 16, Brianna Church. Number 24, Kelsey D. Jarnett. Number 27, Riley Elder. Number 30, Cassie Eldred. Number nine, Ivy Fortner. Number 13, Julie Gast. Number double zero, Laney Gofor. Number seven, Hannah Hefner. Number 17, Shakala James. Number 25, Kylie Latham. Kylie's not here. Coach, can we get that to her tomorrow? She's not here. Number six, Chesney Millsaps. Number one, Addie Mitchell. Number 10, Jasmine Parker. Number 11, Jeslin Parsons. Number 21, Alexa Rash. Number eight, Gracie Roney. Number four, Aleah Siegel. Number two, Ashley Siegel. Number three, Maddie Starnes. Number 14, Alexis Walter. And number 26, Sarah Warda. Give them a round of applause. Okay, as Mrs. Mead is trying to figure out how to arrange you for a picture, and we may even have to go outside, all jokes aside, I want to go ahead and recognize the coaching staff. A wonderful head coach, Mr. Darrell Adkins, please come forward. You have a little goodie in that envelope, and it's awfully close to Central Park because I know you spend a lot of time there. So congratulations. Assistant coaches, Josh Bumgarner, is he here? Okay, I didn't think so. And I didn't see Nikki Boss. Is she here? Okay. What about Daniel Church? Danny Dyson. Randy Elder. And a wonderful sports information director, Jonathan Watts. And before you go outside for the picture or whatever, I must add that Chesney Millsaps was named most valuable player of the state competition. Give her a round of applause. Chesney, come up here with Coach Adkins. He, yeah, come on up here.
Seniors.
Okay, come on.
We just have a little token for the board and superintendent, just to remember this day. It does include, I guess, all the signatures of all the players and coaches.
Wow.
And recognizing the 2018 state champions.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Okay, you want to take them outside? Are you all ready to scoot as soon as the picture's taken? Just slide out this back door.
I don't want to stay for the hour meeting.
Can I go with y'all?
We have lots of fun.
Congratulations, girls. Congratulations, very proud.
Very good job. Thanks so much. Good job. Congratulations.
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 Thank you so much. Thank you. Congratulations. Thanks, Coach. Thank you, Jonathan. Okay, that'll take just a few minutes, so we need to stall for a little bit of time. So I'm going to ask Sheri Weatherspoon and Beth Fox with the Republicans Women Club Essay Contest to come forward and tell the audience just a little bit about the essay, how you were able to, I guess, encourage student participation, and then after that, we will recognize student winners. So Sheri, will you and Beth come on up?
Hello. We want to thank the board for allowing us to bring our essay contest into the public schools. We appreciate that. We decided to do an essay contest and base it on Alexander County historical things of history, whether it's person, place, or thing. So we presented that into the schools to see if we would get any participation, and we did. Two schools participated, Bethlehem and Stony Point.
Did you want to say anything about? No? Okay.
So we appreciate the opportunity, and we will be doing this again in the fall. And this was just a trial run, so we're going to ramp up a bigger one in the fall.
Would you talk about the three categories of winners? $10 winner, $20 winner.
Oh, yes. We had 12 participants, and since, we didn't want to leave anybody out, we did it based on the winner, the top winner out of all of them. And then we gave seven $25 prize, and then four will be receiving $10 as an honorary mention.
We'll get started. I'll let the two of you present the certificate and the checks, okay? Absolutely.
Okay, the papers, some of the essays, we printed essays, and they are in the window of a main street at Swrims. At Swrims Place, where you could pay your light bill. So if you want to go by and read what the children have written, all of their papers are up there in that window. And the two schools will receive a copy. We're doing a notebook, and the two schools, Bethlehem and Stony Point, will have a notebook, and will have a copy of all of these essay winners. We hope that next year, we can have another one and do it earlier in the year so that they won't have so much going on as late as this one was.
We'll get started with the $10 winners. The first winner being recognized is Laney Barnes from Bethlehem Elementary School. The title of the writing was "All About Hit Night Minds." Is she here? And Laney, I want you to stay up here so we can get a big group picture also, okay? The second $10 winner is Allison Koenig from Bethlehem Elementary School. The writing was entitled "Mary Elizabeth White Scott." Congratulations. Go slower, she's getting picks. The next $10 winner is Ty Matheson from Bethlehem Elementary School. The writing was entitled "Rocky Face Mountain History." Round of applause. And then the final $10 winner was Bradley Little from Stony Point Elementary. Excuse me, Brady Little, I'm sorry, from Stony Point Elementary, and the writing was entitled "Harry Gant." Round of applause. Okay, Mrs. Mead, do you want to get all of the winners? Okay. The next category, these are $25 winners. First student is Riley Glover from Bethlehem Elementary. The writing was entitled "Rocky Face Mountain." The next $25 winner is Maddie Spainhour, Bethlehem Elementary School. The writing was entitled "Harry Gant." The next winner in the $25 category, Bailey Tyler, Bethlehem Elementary School. The writing was entitled "Robert Lee Flowers." Next, we have Jacob Moretz, Stony Point Elementary School, writing entitled "Rocky Face Mountain." And Beth's grandson.
Smile and think about spending 25 bucks.
The next winner is Kendall Rector, Stony Point Elementary School, writing entitled "Rocky Face Park." Weston Rogers from Stony Point Elementary School. The writing was entitled "Emeralds in Alexander County." The last $25 winner was Joe Sullivan, Stony Point Elementary School, writing entitled "Rocky Face Mountain." And the $50 winner is Ashton Curtis, Stony Point Elementary School. The writing was entitled "The Old Jail." Congratulations. Bailey Tyler, and... Okay, I'll tell you what, students, if you will, make sure you have the right check. Make sure your name's on the check. Okay, okay. Okay, very good, and we'll get that. To Bradley. Brady, sorry, Brady, I did it again. Yes, yes, we will, we will. Wonderful. Okay, Mrs. Mead, help us line up for a picture. Keep smiling. Keep smiling. Keep smiling. Keep smiling. Keep smiling. Give this group another round of applause. And Jordan Hefner, I'm just seeing you in the back. Will you get this one? Congratulations. Congratulations, boys and girls. Okay. Wonderful. Great job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you, Beth. So did you see, you told your mom I said hello. Thank you so much. Bye, Susan. Thank you. Great grandson. Congratulations. Yes, he is. Congratulations. We have more celebrating to do. The next award will be the CBCC Jeanette L. Stanley Mathematics Tournament winners. And Alexander County Schools had 26 students compete in the 25th Annual CBCC Jeanette L. Stanley Mathematics Tournament on Friday, April 27. There were a total of 248 student competitors involved in this event. Alexander Early College had 16 students that competed. Melissa Sharp and Tony Warren served as Alexander Early College sponsors. We congratulate two winners. Emma Maltba from the Early College took first place in the Math 1 Division, and her sister Hannah Maltba took fifth place for Alexander Early College in the Math 2 Division. So math is definitely a talent in the Maltba family. Congratulations. Maltba gals, come up. Wonderful. And we'll want you to center yourselves between the A right here for a picture. 10 West Alexander Middle School students participated in the competition. Laura Starnes served as the West Alexander Middle School sponsor, and each school team competed against other school teams. Students could also compete in an individual competition. Congratulations are in order for Michael Brown, West Alexander Middle School, first place pre-algebra. And is he here, Dr. Maynor? I thought so. Well, let's give him a round of applause. And Dr. Maynor, would you get that certificate to him? Oh, yes.
Good job, girls.
Congratulations.
Chairman Bowman, if you'll help me with the last award. Now it's time to rec, to, excuse me, to recognize one of our outstanding staff members at the central office. Tracy Russell. Tracy Russell, the 2017-18 Chairman for NCAEOP Professional Standards Program Committee. Mrs. Tracy Russell has served as the Chairperson of the North Carolina Association of Education Office Personnel during the 2017-18 school year. She has served in various capacities on the local, district, and state levels. NCAEOP consists of 14 districts and provides professional growth opportunities, leadership, and service for employees in education through a specifically designed certification program, quality training, and networking opportunities. Tracy is amazing, she certainly goes above and beyond in this office as well, but tonight, she is getting recognition for the role she has played at the state level. Congratulations.
Okay, now it's time, if there's any public comment, I'll check that. Board members, you've had an opportunity to review the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any no's? Thank you, that motion carries. Okay, we're moving on to reports, and I'd like to ask Mr. Kerry Cash to come up and give us the monthly school update.
And he tried to pay those softball players to stay for his presentation, but I don't see that he stayed.
That's what I will say, I probably messed up because I was offering autographed softball if they'd stay for the presentation, but I didn't know that they were going to present softballs to you. So, Coach Atkins was probably back there going, "Oh, be quiet, I've got one." But that's okay, that's okay. All right, thank you for the opportunity to come and talk a little bit about Sure Love School tonight. Like to talk a little bit about the importance of developing partnerships with the community, and also using all available resources that you can use to support the education at your school. Let's go to the next slide. We'll go on to the third slide. First of all, in the past, we have had a partnership with the public schools, a partnership with Appalachian State, and we've used services and been activities and workshops there, but this year, we used it in a different way. At the first semester, when I believe it was maybe mid-September, we had our media person resign and leave, we, I was looking for ways, I was calling universities and trying to find somebody that was certified as a media specialist, and was having a hard time doing that. Ended up talking with a professor at Appalachian, and she was interested in coming to schools and sort of getting back in touch with the schools, and finding out what's going on in the media centers at school. And the second bullet there, her, we called her Dr. Jen, and I'll tell you why, because her full name is Dr. Jennifer Lukemire. And not only couldn't the kids, the kids couldn't say it, they certainly couldn't spell it, so that's why she went by Dr. Jen. We'll start out, in the first semester, she ended up volunteering at our school, and it may have been once every two weeks, but came in and tried to fill role until we could find somebody for a media person. And then, second semester, it developed into her working with a fourth grade teacher to write a grant to try to improve reading skills. And why did we do fourth grade? Two reasons, the teacher was willing to do that, worked with the professor, and also, we looked at, sometimes in third grade, we have read to achieve, and we know it's a heavy emphasis on reading and a lot of drill, and then, sometimes in fourth grade, there may not be as much, so we wanted to hit the, try to keep that going in fourth grade to work on the reading skills. We, when she came, she worked with the students, along with the teacher, and had a pre-test and a post-test. And at the post-test, 65% of students improved their reading skills, so that was a great, great thing. We'll go to the next slide, I think I have a slide in there that the students collaborated with their classmates, developed novels, and what they worked on is we, the emphasis was on taking interest of the students that have, that they had, and try to help them read more and develop their reading skills. Let's go to the next slide. Okay, here's an example, Ms. Cronin was the teacher, and Cronin Chronicles was one of the books they made. All right, next thing, working with the Hidnite Center, in the past, we'd worked with the Hidnite Center to provide art classes. This year, the person that usually works with us at the Hidnite Center could not work with us in art instruction as far as, there was some family matters going on and some time constraints, so we just happened to have a third grade student that moved into our school that had a teacher that taught art, which is in South Carolina. So, we worked with her to provide art instruction, and we were able to do that three weeks where each kid would have at least one day a week of art instruction, so try and do that. Heritage Day, we worked with the Hidnite Center, and kids these days are losing a lot of touch with the heritage that we have. They don't see the things that our grandparents and even before those times did, and this is a good, the Hidnite Center came to our school, I believe there were 15, 16 presenters. Students in each grade level had around 90 minutes to go around different sessions in the gym, and they were able to see, I believe they saw at least 12 presenters, so they were able to see a lot of things they don't see in everyday life. Okay, we partnered with Horseman for the Sis of the Month Award. We tried something different this year. Glenn Eckert from Horseman was, he offered, "I can come cook pancakes for your kids." And he was able to come do that, and he cooked, and I served, and we had a good time doing it, and the kids really enjoyed that, doing something different. And as I served, I had to put back a little bit for me along the way. But that was, the kids really, really liked that, doing something different this year. Okay, Lunch Buddies, we saw some kids that do not have the parental support at home, that just need somebody to come and eat lunch with them, just to talk with them for 30 minutes at a time. So, we started that, I think we had 14 kids that participated in this, and even had one student that their person didn't come for, say, three weeks. They, "Where's my person going to come, when are they going to come?" Well, the person was sick, and they could come, because, but, so we tried to help her out and get her somebody else in there, so it was a big thing to them, that they expected the person to come every one or two weeks. Okay, next, we also had our Second Family Camping Night. We had a great turnout, we had 111 students attended. Says we gave out 146 resource bags and home toolkits to help parents working with kids on homework and different things. And you had, "Well, how, why did you give out more bags than students?" Well, we have a lot of students that have split families, and they live with, unfortunately, they live with one person, one parent this week, one parent next week, so we gave to both the parents so they have them at home. And also, I remember there were some preschool students that came along, and they, if their parents wanted some for their kindergarten student, or their preschool, we gave them the kindergarten bags, and we tried to give all out we could. Okay, this picture from Family Camping Night. Okay, we were awarded the Loews Improvement Grant of $25,000. We had scheduled workdays to start work on that. We had scheduled the first day to work a little bit inside, but mostly outside. The rain did not cooperate with it, so we tried to keep on where we could work outside, but we did actually get outside last Saturday. We had both days, we had workday, we had over 16 parents and teachers coming and work. Let's go to the next slide, this is a picture of people painting inside. Okay, go to the next slide. This is the front entrance of the office area. The wall on the left that has a window, if you remember, that was, as you entered the building, it had become where there were chips in the wall. There was a hole where the door handle had hit the door. We took that and fixed that, and smoothed it all out, and painted that, and made a big, big difference in that office area. The, and then, outside, that's, okay, you can go ahead. Then, outside, that is a picture of the outside entrance to the school. Dug up a lot of things that shouldn't be growing there, weeds and things, and made it look a whole lot, a whole lot better. Okay, other great things. Next thing, talk a little bit about Todd One Fun, we tried to do things this year to use our money efficiently. First, we hired a remediation assistant, part-time hours, to work in the remediation blocks, to work, to make even smaller groups that our teachers could work in small groups. Also, this person could target some people that really need some one-on-one help. After school tutor, we started that this year. We had a tutor work with kids from 3:15 to 4:30. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, we had reading. On Wednesdays, we had math. I believe we had six in the group on Tuesday, four on Thursday, and on Wednesday, we had to do every other week because we had so many signed up for math. And then, also, a part-time teacher assistant to help, we end up helping, having her help in the computer lab as a tech assistant, work with kids as they could reinforce skills of basic math skills and basic reading skills. Okay, next thing, just finished up integrated grade testing. The percent of students, after the figures came, I guess I'm going to say this is preliminary, unofficial results and all those words before, but from my figures, the percent of students that were proficient in reading was up 2.6%, and then, in math, the percent of students was up 12.7% from last year. Why did that happen? Some things, I think the teachers were becoming more familiar with teaching the Engage New York. The second thing is the teachers stayed on pace, and they made sure that everything was taught, that was fully taught in the right amount of time, and the students, as they have went through the grade levels, they have seen this more and the different way of teaching that they weren't used to before. So, they've become more accustomed to that. All right, next thing, I'll go back, the, I have on there about, now, these is not the same group of students from one year to another, but in fifth grade math, one of our things were emphasis on really improving those scores. Last year, we did not do nearly as well as we wanted to in fifth grade math. So, this year, the percent of students that were proficient in fifth grade went up 17.5%, which was a major improvement. And this group, as they went from fourth grade to fifth grade, they also moved up with a number of students that were proficient in math on the integrated test. And the last thing I'll talk about is sometimes in education, victories don't always come to the people who finish first. And why I say that is I want to talk about two third grade students that gained 20 points on the integrated test. And one student, they gained 20 points, and they went from a Level 1 to barely making what they needed to make to pass the integrated test. So, they gained that much, so that was a victory. Also, I had another student that gained 20 points, but she missed it by one point. But she didn't necessarily pass the test, but she still improved and had a great year, and she'll try again tomorrow to pass, so we'll hope she gets it on that try. All right, I believe that's, oh, have a couple. E-Bob Team, last year, we struggled to get enough team, we tried to put emphasis on that to develop the love of reading. We ended up having 12 students this year on the team. Last year, we had, we went down to three or four that tried to make the team. Okay, that's, you can keep on going, not efficient. On the running clubs that we have, I'll end on this one. After school activity, but another victory that you celebrate, I had a student that, a boy that could barely, I think the most he made in practicing was two miles. Well, in the race Saturday night, he was able to run, run and walk and jog, whatever he needed to do. He was able to do the whole 5K, and he did that in a little bit under 50 minutes. Well, that's another victory you need to celebrate. He was the first one. Zachary over here is on the run, he's one of our fastest, and I think he, I think he beat me Saturday night, I'm not real sure, but you gotta celebrate in education all the victories you can. And I think that's all I have, any questions?
Just appreciate the good work and the quality staff that you have.
Thank you.
It resonates.
Thank you.
I like your paint color, too. It's pretty. It's pretty.
Thank you. Okay, we'll discuss the results of the Head Start Federal Monitoring Visit, and I'll ask Ms. Macy Toms.
Chairman Bowman, board members, and Dr. Rector, good evening to each of you. I'm here to report on the federal review. Overall, our program did very well, and I want to take this time to thank the board members, the Policy Council members, community partners, Head Start managers, teachers assistants, and all of the support staff for helping prepare for the review and for participating in the focus area interviews with the reviewers. From February 27 through March 2nd, we had four people here, along with a virtual team lead, and they conducted what they call a Focus Area 2 Monitoring Review of our Head Start program. That's an on-site review. The report you received and your documents contains information about the program's performance and compliance with the requirements of the Head Start regulations. All of that is public law, and it also covered improving the Head Start for School Readiness Act of 2007. The representatives from the Administration of Children and Families, in their letter, wanted to thank the governing body, that's you, for your participation, and also to thank the Policy Council members and staff for engaging in the process. The good news is, our program did not receive any deficiencies. And deficiencies can cause a program to enter recompetition, so that's good news. Our program attained the highest performance statues in the following, status in the following areas. Program management, program governance, ERCIA, education and child program services, health program services, and family and community engagements. And that's what you have in your report, and it showed up as little green check marks. There is one area of non-compliance that must be addressed within 120 days. We must provide a plan of action that is approved by the board and by the Policy Council, and I'll be back a little later to present that plan of action, and that was also included in your packet. Every Head Start program must provide a non-federal match. We reported using funds that we received from the NC Pre-K program as part of our non-federal match. And funds are used to help offset the cost of some of the Head Start expenses, but where we need to make a change is we need to do blending of classrooms, and I'll explain a little bit more about that whenever I come back. Again, I have the plan of action, and a request ready to go to regional office pending your approval and Policy Council approval, and Policy Council will meet this coming Wednesday at 4:30. The second part of that review, we had what we called a class of observations. I've provided that report for you as well, and I do have some slides for that presentation. The class is called the Classroom Assessment Scoring System, and it is a research-based observation tool used nationwide to review Head Start classrooms. One reviewer was responsible for reviewing all six of the Head Start classrooms, so she spent all of her time in classrooms. Slide one, if you go ahead in advance to the first slide, is broken down by emotional support. And I won't go through every one of these, if you have questions for me about any particular... If you have questions for me about any particular, uh, dimension, I'll be glad to explain that. But emotional support, this domain assesses the degree to which teachers and assistants establish and promote a positive climate in their classroom. And if you can see that, I know it's, um, kind of small, you will see that in the, the light colored blue, we have positive climate. The light colored blue is the national average. The dark blue is our Head Start program scores. In every domain, we scored above the national averages. That's in emotional support. Some of the things that they look for in emotional support, uh, they look to see if teachers and students are enjoying being with each other, um, what the feel is in the classroom, if students are comfortable in the classroom, if they feel secure in the classroom, and they also look at how sensitive the teachers are to the needs of the children in the classroom as well. If you'll go to the next slide, the next domain is classroom organization. This domain assesses classroom routines and procedures related to the organization and management of children's behavior. In this domain, they look at behavior management, productivity, instructional learning formats. And again, in the blue, you will see the national average scores, and then you will see our Head Start scores. And again, we scored above the national average. The next slide is instructional support. And in this domain, it assesses the ways in which teachers implement the curriculum to fidelity. We use creative curriculum, we have printouts, we have lesson plans, we have domains that we, um, we put side by side on a template with what the North Carolina Foundations are doing for preschool and kindergarten children to measure outcomes as well. And if you'll look at this slide, again, we have scored higher than the national average. And then the final score, the national averages in emotional support is six point oh seven, we scored six point five four one seven. In classroom organization, the national average is five point eight three, we scored six point oh five five six. And then finally, in instructional support, um, the national average is three, and we scored four point eight three three. So we did very well with our classroom assessment scores. Uh, the reason that this is important is because when programs do poorly on the class, uh, it can also throw a program into recompetition. So I don't foresee that happening.
Macy, is this observation done annually but at a different site? Is that how that works?
This observation is done every three years.
Every three years.
But we have teachers who are class certified.
Yes.
And they are able to do what we call dual coding. They can go into each other's classrooms and do the same scoring system at any time throughout the year. And then, uh, we had, um, Paula, who worked with the Partnership for Children, worked with us on, uh, I'm sorry, Rhonda, who worked for the Partnership for Children, do, um, making the most of classroom interactions. That's an intensive twenty-week study that all of our teachers and assistants went through. We were the first in the state of North Carolina to go through that assessment. And then we had a national reviewer who just does class assessments across the nation, come and work with our classrooms. But every three years, but in between the three-year and the visit, we are in the classrooms doing assessments as well. So any questions for me about, um, the review? And again, I appreciate those of you who are able to meet with the, the team leader and to, uh, go through those interviews.
I, I wanna thank Macy for preparing those of us who did participate, 'cause it was, I can only imagine how stressful it was for you folks, 'cause it was stressful for me. How about you, Scott? Uh, to meet with that team of national folks, and, but you prepared us, we knew what to expect, we knew, uh, sort of what they were gonna ask us, and I for one appreciated it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is our monthly superintendent's report, and I'll ask Dr. Heffler to present.
Okay, thank you. I, I have to admit that Deborah was working late into, and into the afternoon, getting everything wrapped up for softball recognition, so, um, I sent her my update late, but we'll upload it to the agenda when we finish tonight, because, uh, the first bullet is about high school graduation, and you may want to refer back to that. But I just wanted to tell you that the weather forecast looks promising for Friday evening for the seven o'clock graduation at the high school stadium. I'm very happy about that, considering all the rain we've had in the past couple of weeks. When you arrive, you will park in the bus parking lot behind the auditorium. An ROTC student will be on duty at the electronic gate, and that's not the one, if you are pulling down into the school, but it's the one off of School Drive. It's an electronic gate, an ROTC member will be there waiting on you, and you need to give that person your name and tell them you are a board member, and they'll let you through the gate so that you can park. As usual, all board members will be seated on the stage, so you'll get your seating assignment on Friday evening. You should arrive at the school, I would suggest, no later than six, because you will have issues getting into the campus if you're later than that. We will meet as a group in the media center. We're going to line up to march into the stadium at six forty-five, and I would ask again that you let Deborah know the names of the students that you want to hand a diploma to, have that done by noon tomorrow, if you want to, to hand out any diplomas. And I would venture a guess, a couple of you might. Um, I'm really happy about this, but the Twenty First Century Learning Grant was submitted last week. It, the deadline was, uh, May thirtieth, and we met the deadline, and we have the electronic proof to show it. Uh, I want to commend Sandra Miller for her hard work on that grant. Uh, Ms. Lingle, if you will, make sure you tell her that I mentioned her name specifically. Dr. Curry was also instrumental in helping her pull together some details for that grant, and I would just ask that you cross your fingers that we will be awarded this funding. Uh, the grant was written this time for three sites. The three sites are Taylorsville, Hidnite, and Stony Point, spanning about a hundred sixty children. So, uh, certainly, if we are funded for that grant, it will help a lot of children, and we hope to hear some really good news in September. The third bullet, uh, we've also been invited to participate in an education innovation and research grant, being written through the Borough's Welcome Fund. This five-year project will involve classes in grades three, four, and five, and focuses on STEM instruction. Burke County, Lincoln County, and Alexander County were the three districts invited to be a part of this grant, and then, of course, more details will be shared with you as the grant is written, but I was very honored to get a call from Dr. Sam Houston inviting us to be a part of it. So, again, good news for our system. Wanted to let you know that next week, our official summer schedule, uh, begins for employees. We will be working four ten-hour days, and the buildings will be closed on Fridays. And we, of course, will post signage at each of our facilities, letting the public know that. I want to thank those of you who were able to attend the retiree reception last Thursday. I know that I for one enjoyed the picture of the man, Scott Bowman. Uh, he made history at the retiree reception as, as being our official man, I guess, in the pictures. So he was asked for specifically for a photo op, but, um, everyone really seemed to have a great time, and I think separating that event out from the board meeting is a good move moving forward. It was very special for the retirees. Federal allotments, with the exception of Title I, came in today. So this m- uh, information, along with an approved state budget, will allow us to make some budget decisions and do some planning over the next several weeks, so that was kind of breaking news for today. Uh, we had been waiting on those federal dollars, um, or at least the amounts, the dollars won't get here until probably November, if we're lucky, and I said, if we're lucky. Um, wanted to let you know that summer reading camp for first, second, and third graders will begin July twenty-third and conclude on August ninth. Kelly Tease will be the acting administrator for this program, and more details will be given to you at the July board meeting. And then lastly, the document that is attached provides some important dates for school accountability reporting. I'm just giving you that for your information, it came to us directly from DPI, because everybody wants to know, how did we do with our testing? What kind of report card grade will the school get? But none of that will be official to us until September and October. So, uh, you know, Mr. Cash, he reiterated preliminary, uh, a- all those words that he gave you today. We have some numbers, but none of them will be state board approved until September and October. So I just wanted you to have the memo. Do you have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, uh, is unfinished business, and I'll call with Sharon McCaffrey up for the second reading of policy revisions.
We have six policies up, uh, for a second reading this month that were presented to the, to the principals and available to the staff. I received no questions or comments or suggestions, so I would ask that you approve those on second reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving the policies as presented on the second read, and please say yes?
Yes.
Any no's? And that carries. McCaffrey, will you continue with the next, uh, first reading?
We have ten policies that are up for first reading in June. Uh, we will, uh, again, pre- uh, present those to the principals and other members of the staff, um, during the month, and bring those back to you next month.
Okay. And if you will continue on the, uh, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year.
Um, I'm making my yearly trip to, to ask you to approve a continuing resolution, although this year it is more hopeful that we will have some information, um, after, um, DPI has, uh, ten days after they've received the final legislation to send us our allotments, and that is going to put it right in the middle of closeout in June, so it, it, it'll be just real fun. But, um, I ask you for approval of the continuing resolution until we can present the budget to you.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
So moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any no's? Thank you, that carries. Thank you. Next up is Ms. Susan Gant, uh, and she'll be talking about our CTE local plan.
Good evening, Dr. Heffler, Chairman, Chairman Bowman, and members of the board. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to present to you and to get to talk to you once a year about CTE, so, uh, get to talk about things that we're doing. Uh, 'cause every year I have to come, our LPS, which is our local planning system, must be approved, must be reviewed and approved by the board. So I hope you've had an opportunity to look over the almost six-page summary, and I realize six pages doesn't sound like much of a summary, but the full report's in a notebook. Um, so I hope you've had the opportunity to look over that, that should've been attached. And also, at the very end of that is login information. If you want to go online and look at the full report, uh, it is available online, so I provided you the guest, um, passwords to get in, and I also have a printed copy in my office, if you want to stop by and see it sometime. Some things I want to talk about today, though. Um, first, the LPS must be submitted to DPI every year, that is our application for state and federal funding. Uh, in the CTE department, for Alexander County schools, we operate solely on state and federal funding, so it's important that we receive that money. Our funding is based on our overall enrollment for students in grades six through twelve, so middle and high school. Um, we're funded to provide services for students in grades six through twelve, but the funding is based on our enrollment in student, of students in grades eight through twelve. Um, so there is a little difference in what we're expected to provide and the money that, uh, is given to us. Part one of the LPS is an overview and a strategic planning tool. Part two is designed to attain and maintain performance excellence, uh, as defined by the Carl Perkins Career and Technical Education Act. So I'm gonna start with part one, which is an overview, and a lot of this you know, um, and I apologize, Dr. Griffin, there are a lot of slides, I was hoping I could click them pretty quickly, so I'm gonna nod, and he can work on them for me. Um, every three years, I meet on a regular basis with our regional CTE directors. Uh, the, the Northwest region, we meet about five times a year. Um, and so every three years, we have to present our local plan to our colleagues, the other CT directors in the region. Uh, and this year was my year to present, so there are certain criteria that has to be included in that presentation, so some of the slides that you'll see tonight were just part of that presentation, I just modified it a bit for tonight. So there is information up there that you know already, um, so I'm just gonna skim over those. If you'd like a copy of the slides, I'm happy to share those if you want all that information. But I even listed courses that we teach up there, which I won't go into tonight. Uh, but I'll start at the middle school level. We do have four teachers at the middle school, two at East and two at West, uh, and they, basically, they're business certified, so that's the courses that we have been offering. Uh, basically, keyboarding modules and then, um, some career planning in eighth grade. Uh, but we're gonna change that up next year, so that's something I'm very excited about. Um, we have been doing some research and exploration, and we have found some career modules that we want to implement. Um, so we're gonna reduce the keyboarding and the, um, word processing that we do now, and that will be done, instead of in a semester, that will be done in a nine weeks. The other nine weeks, the students will be able to rotate through hands-on modules that are career exploration in nature. Um, so that is costing us a little bit, so I'm working on a, a Golden Leaf Grant now that can help provide those for us. But they are college and career prep modules that use problem-based, real-world technology. The students will rotate through several hands-on modules each nine weeks. They will also serve as an introduction to courses offered at Alexander Central, so hopefully the students, once they participate in a module, if they're interested in it, then we can talk about the classes at the high school that correlate to that module so that they can continue on that path. So we're trying to start them as early as sixth grade, uh, to figure out what their career pathway might be. Obviously, they won't be locked in. Um, something else that we've done this year that can help in that is, uh, wrote a grant, and we were able to hire a middle school career development coordinator. Um, so Brent Dula is hired in that position as of April the sixteenth. Um, so I hired him originally at West, and then I stole him from West, so I'm glad Chad's not here to fuss at me. Um, but he's doing a good job, he's hit the ground running. In fact, he was at West today doing programs with seventh graders since their exams are over. He got in there so he could do some, uh, career interest inventories with them. So he has already started, he will continue to do that. He will also be in charge of STEM tours, uh, doing some college, uh, and career fair-type activities at the middle schools, having students participate in Students at Work Program, which is a job shadowing program, and then again, the career, the interest inventories and career planners to help them focus on what they wanna do at the high school and then beyond. So we're very excited to have him join us and that he's started already. Okay, at the high school, we have nineteen teachers at the high school. We have one, um, the initials up there, Career Development Coordinator, Instructional Management Coordinator, which is the CTE testing piece, and Special Populations Coordinator. Uh, and those are actually three separate positions that we've had one person doing, and I've said for years, that's really too much work for one person to do. Um, well, the person that was doing that retired at the end of February, so I've been doing it since then, and it really, really is too much for one person to do when you have to do all my job, too, so it's, uh, wearing me out. So I'm glad that that position is now posted, and we'll be interviewing and hiring for a new person to start as of August the first. And for next year, it will still be those three positions tied into one, but I'm hoping that I could move toward, maybe even hiring part-time that can help kinda spread those jobs out a little bit. Um, work keys, sixty-five percent proficient. Um, every year we do work keys, you've heard me talk about work keys before, and that's, um, for our twelfth graders that are considered CTE concentrators, which means they've had four or more high school classes in the CTE pathway, with at least one being a level two. This year, we tested two hundred and eight of our seniors, sixty-two percent of the seniors are CTE concentrators. Um, so we do have a lot of those. We tested two hundred and eight students, um, and so sixty-five percent of them are considered proficient, which means they scored a silver, gold, or platinum certificate. Um, in the sev- six years that I have been testing the students, we had one platinum certificate, this year we had twenty-two. Um, so it's amazing the difference that we've had. Um, we do offer courses- We do offer courses in five different, technically, six different program areas. I tend to put business and marketing together, but at the state level, they do separate them out, so six program areas. We also offer courses in twelve different pathways. So the picture on the screen, that's just a chart that I created to help the counselors and the teachers. They give them out to students, they give them out to parents that want them. This just describes the twelve pathways that we offer and all the courses that we offer within that pathway. So if a student is interested in mechanics, then they can find their pathway, and they can see the course, all the courses that we offer that can help lead to a career in mechanics. So this has been a very helpful sheet to have.
Susan, when do they, when do the students and parents see that for the first time? Is it when they are eighth graders?
Actually, to be honest, I don't know that I've shared it with the middle school, but I can't, and we probably will now that Brent's there.
I was going to say, it sounds like it would fit nicely into these modules.
They normally get it before registration, yes. But he will use it more throughout the year because we're going to be doing activities with them year-long now that he's employed. So that will help. So I'm going to go briefly through the five program areas, because y'all know what they are, but I'm going to highlight some things that we do. Our first program area is our ag department. I have three teachers there. They do a fabulous job. They do a great job with FFA, which is the Career and Technical Student Organization associated with that. We actually have a large number of students going in two weeks to Raleigh to the state FFA convention, so hopefully, we'll come back with some state winners, and then they'll go to the national convention in October. So hopefully, I can tell you about that next month, but not yet. But our ag department, the three teachers there, wrote three grants this year. I'll show the picture. The first grant was for our portable sawmill. That grant was through the Agriculture Education Program Improvement Grant sponsored by the North Carolina Tobacco Trust Fund Company. That was a matching grant, so we had to put up half the money, and then they awarded us the other half of the money. But you can see the picture on the left, the portable band sawmill, and the students working that. That was purchased so we could introduce milling lumber from the tree to the board to our students, and then they use the boards that they create for other projects. So that's been a great addition to the program. We got that back in February, so we've been putting it to good use since February. The other two grants, a farm credit grant and a tractor supply grant, were used to construct, not yet, the pole barn, as you can see on the right. The pole barn is for the temporary housing of animals so that we can have live animals on campus when we're talking about them in animal science and equine science. Sometimes it's hard to learn about them looking at a picture or on a slide, so we can bring a live animal on campus, and we have a place to temporarily house them. We have a very small pen now, so this will be a much larger pen that we can have larger animals on campus. They will also use it for animals for any of the FFA contest practices that they need as well. So you can see the students working on the pole barn. Both of those grants were awarded in January, so we've been working on those this semester. Business Department's one of our other areas, and I also market in with them normally because those, they teach the same classes. We do have three teachers there. We're currently doing, having lots of students complete their credentialing through Microsoft Office, so that's a pretty big deal, and so I don't have numbers for you because we're currently doing all that, so I'll bring that back to you later. The next department's Family and Consumer Sciences. I have six teachers. This is our largest department. The three main things I want to mention is the fashion show. I don't know if any of you were able to come last week, but our fashion merchandising classes and apparel, students in one and apparel two, put on a fashion show. This was the second annual one. Fashion merchandising organizes the whole thing. They set it up, they have it timed, they do the whole setup. And apparel one students were required to make two pieces of clothing, a shirt and then either skirt or shorts. The apparel three students had to create a clothing line, three articles of clothing, but they had to be look-related, they had to have a theme. So then in the program, it was described who the designer was, and then what their line was, and their theme, and how they chose their theme. So the fashion show was last week, so that was great. We also have a lot of students in our foods two classes working on serve-safe credentials. If you go out to dinner to a restaurant, you may have noticed the serve-safe certificates on the wall. Every restaurant is required to have someone on staff with a serve-safe credential, so our students can earn that before they leave high school, which makes them a little more hireable than just your average person who wants to go work at a restaurant. We had students testing today, in fact, so we have several that have earned their serve-safe credential already. The third thing I want to mention are the baby cookers. You can go to the next slide. That is our onsite daycare. This year, we have nine students in baby cookers. We had graduation last week, so you can see seven of them in their graduation caps and gowns. Two of them will be returning. But we have this program because we do offer Early Childhood one and two, so this is an onsite lab for those students who are in the Early Childhood program. They create their lesson plans, they talk about what they need to do with children, and then they actually get to go put it in practice. And actually, next year, the numbers in our Early Childhood classes have grown, so we will actually have to send students off-campus too. Otherwise, we would have more high school students than children in the program during those classes. So we will be expanding, and they will go out to area daycares too, to be able to do their work. Health Sciences is the next program area. I have three teachers there. They do participate. Instead of participating in HOSA, they participate in Skills USA. We did have a state winner in basic healthcare skills. They're going to the national convention later in June. We also have twenty students who are working on their CNA one certificate. They've completed the classwork. In fact, they had their exam today, and they'll take their CNA credentialing test later this month. So hopefully, we'll have twenty new CNAs after the end of June. Our last program area is Trade and Industrial Education. I have four teachers there. You can see a little picture of the house in the background, and I am sad to report that that will be our last live house project. We're out of space. There is one lot of land left, but the power lines run through it, and it was going to be cost prohibitive to move the power lines. So we have been partnering with Habitat for Humanity. Even in doing our own house, sometimes the classes kind of overlap, and one class has to wait while another class finishes apart before they can go back out. So we've been using Habitat for Humanity kind of as a simple mill site, but this year, they wanted to build three houses. So they were, we were able to have three houses in production all at the same time, different stages, so the students still get that hands-on approach. We have talked to Matt Cooksey, and he pretty much guaranteed us, his plan anyway, is that they will continue to do three houses a year. So we should always have a house in a different stage of construction that we can send our students out to work on. We also partner with Habitat. Even our interior design classes can help work with them, and they're also going to help in the restore that, now that it's a little closer to school, it'll be a little easier for them to get there as well. One of our other clubs, the National Technical Honor Society, we induct students every fall in that, and the criteria is listed. We also have partnerships with CBCC, which you're aware of. We do the cohort program. We also have our welding turf grass. We've offered it for the past two years. We haven't had enough student interest in turf grass for that class to make, to be a class that they actually hold on campus. We have to have at least eight students, and we've had several, but we haven't gotten eight yet, so that class hasn't made, but we're still trying to get there. The business and the fire protection classes are online. We do participate with the Furniture Academy, and we've started conversation about a Construction Careers Academy. That conversation started, Semelto Furniture Academy. The construction trades people were like, we need workers, we need people that are trained. So the conversation started as a large group, Burke County, Caldwell County, Catawba County, and Alexander County, and meeting with contractors and subcontractors, what do you, what do you need, what skills you need to have. They wanted to know what we were teaching in the schools, so all that has started. So CBCC is hoping to get a class started this summer for their Construction Careers Academy that we can build from there, so that will be a good place, too. They come over and talk to the students, so we're trying to send some students that way that are interested in construction careers. We do still participate in apprenticeship Catawba. There are now eight businesses in that. We have two students that hopefully will continue on and be full-time apprentices with two different companies through this program. We have our Business Advisory Council, which is combined with the CBCC Advisory Council because it's the same people on both. But this year, the difference is there was some new legislation that we had to have bylaws, so I had to work on bylaws and get those approved. And they also stated that the CTE director had to serve as secretary. So whoever made that nomination did not know my lack of skills as keeping, in keeping minutes at meetings. But anyway, so that's something that I will struggle with, but we have made that change as well. We also had our Fourth Annual Career Fair for eleventh and twelfth graders. This year, we changed it up just a little bit. We had two sessions. Part of the kids were in a traditional career fair setting where they go around to the different tables and talk to vendors. The other part of the kids were in the other gym, and we had two local business leaders who shared how they got started, what their educational background were, and things that they look for in employees when they're hiring, so the students could hear that presentation. And we kept it fairly short so that they didn't get too bored, and then we would switch groups, so all the students got to hear both parts. And I intentionally put this picture up for you, Dr. Griffin. Now you have to go back to the picture. The one on the right, Dr. Griffin always participates in our career fair, so Alexander County Schools is represented. This year, he had a conflict, so he sent the booth, but he sent Becky Rosenberg to man the booth. Her goal, she told me when she got there, was to talk to more kids than Dr. Griffin did. So she went out and bought candy, and she is bringing them in. So I took the picture on the day and sent it out to Griffin and said, Becky's reeling them in. She's done a good job. So she wanted to make sure she talked to more kids than he did. The second part of the LPS is about our data and what we call performance indicators. And so this is basically the way CTE is evaluated on the state and national level, because anybody can look through our LPS. So I'm going to go through these pretty quickly. This is a requirement of the presentation I did to our, to my colleagues back last month. But we looked through seven different areas. The first one, you can see academic attainment for reading. Now, that score is based on English II EOC scores, so that's not really, it's not based on anything CTE-related. That's based on English II scores. And you can see there, there's our three-year trend, and we are below the state and the region, although not a whole lot. The state was at forty-nine percent, so across the board, no one is blowing the top out of that one. But we do have work to do in that area, and I'm hoping that the emphasis at the middle school levels, their remediation classes, the use of language lab in middle school and in the freshman academy, that we'll, we'll see that number grow in the future. The next area is academic attainment in mathematics, and again, this one is based on Math I scores, so that's not anything CTE-related either. That's overall Math I scores, which could be eighth graders, could be not, usually ninth graders, could be others too, but it's Math I scores. So we were below the region barely. The region was at forty-three. We were above the state at forty-one. So again, no one's blowing the top out of that one either, but that's something that we all will focus on and work on. The next area is technical attainment, and that does relate specifically to our CTE final exams or end-of-course assessments. If the students are proficient on their end-of-course assessment, which is valued with a score of seventy or above, then they're considered proficient, and they have reached their technical attainment. So we are above the region and the state in that area. The next area is secondary school completion. That is the students that are in CTE classes if they complete high school. So you can see for us, we were at ninety-six point nine percent last year. That is below the region and the state. They were both at ninety-eight, so even though ninety-six is very good, we were below at ninety-eight, so we will work on our students completing high school. The next area is student graduation rates, and that's a cohort group. The first one's individual students. This is a cohort group, so if they finish in their four years. Ninety-eight percent is excellent, but the state and the region were both at ninety-nine, so we're just a little bit below. The next area, five S one, is secondary placement. That's what our students do after high school. So even though they graduate, we don't forget about them. We want to make sure that they're doing something that is productive, hopefully something that we've helped to train them to do. So every year, we do what we call a concentrator feedback survey, where we call the kids after they've graduated, they've been out eight or nine months, we call them to see what they're doing. Are they in school full-time, part-time? Are they working full-time, part-time? And what area are they working in? Does it relate to the classes that they had in high school? So our percentage is ninety-four point five, which is excellent, even though that is barely below the region at forty, ninety-four point eight, and the state was at ninety-five. So again, we're below the state and region, but we're still very close on those. And then the last two areas are related. It's non-traditional participation and non-traditional completion. For CTE, we have our course list, and we can identify students that are in non-traditional areas. So males in nursing would be considered non-traditional. Females in construction trades would be considered non-traditional. So those classes they look at. Some classes are what they call gender neutral, all the business classes. Doesn't matter if you're male or female, that's not on the non-traditional list. So we look at those classes to see if we have students participating, and you can see by our scores that that's pretty low, but it's across the states pretty low. The state was at twenty-eight percent, the region at twenty-five point six. And to be honest, that's not one I'm real worried about. I'm not interested in pushing students into classes that they're not interested in just because it would be a non-traditional fix for them and a score for us. We want students to be in classes that they're interested in, and hopefully, that we can prepare them for a career. So to be honest, I'm not real sure why we even have to track that information. They just want to make sure that we're providing opportunities for all students, that we're not limiting them based on gender. The last one, non-traditional completion, and that's if we, if they do start a class, do they actually finish a pathway? So you can see that thirty percent of our students that start in a class that's considered non-traditional will actually complete that pathway when they graduate from high school. And we are above the state and the region in that, which tells me that even though the number is low, that the students are in those classes because they want to be in those classes, not because we're encouraging them to be there because it would fit description. So I tried to do that fast. We have a lot of slides. I promised Dr. Griffin I'd go fast because there were a lot of slides. But anyway, do you have any questions on the local plan or anything that we're doing in CTE that I can answer for you?
One question about the career modules in middle school.
Yes.
Is that, is that going to kind of tie to the, what is it they do in the spring typically where they pick a job and they?
The real.
Real-world, real money?
It won't specifically. In real-world, real money, they're usually given, or it's kind of drawn out of a hat, what their job will be, so that won't necessarily be the same ones, no. And the way this will work, the students, there'll be ten different modules set up in the classroom, and students, like if I'm a sixth grader, I will probably only get through three modules in my nine weeks, because each module's going to take about three weeks to complete, and they'll do it in pairs. But then as a seventh grader, then they'll do three different modules, and then as an eighth grader, they'll do three different modules. So they will get through, and we put a tent in there in case there's extra time, or if it doesn't take three weeks, or just to make sure we have it covered. So they should get through all of those by the time they finish middle school.
Okay. Thank you.
If land presented itself is the discussion of continuing the house project?
Definitely.
Okay. And one more partnership that wasn't on the presentation is the CTE trades classes have done a wonderful job in the past building shelters at Matheson Park, and we look forward to that continued partnership in the coming school year.
I was going to say, it sounds like you have a job for us.
Yes, yes.
We can do that. Well, our local plan does require board approval so that it can be submitted as our application for funding.
Is there a motion to approve the CTE local plan as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any who knows? Thank you, the motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I'll call Ms. Macy Jones back for the response of the Office of the Head Start regarding non-compliance of regulations.
As I mentioned before in your packet, you should have a copy of the response to our area of non-compliance, and since the issue is that we did not have a blended classroom, the proposal is that beginning July twenty eighteen, this school, this coming school year, the Alexander County Head Start will blend NC pre-K and referred to in the report as MORE at FOUR program. And I see that I put twenty nineteen, but I mean July twenty eighteen, okay? The director has consulted with, I've consulted with other Head Start and NC pre-K program directors in North Carolina to determine a formula for blending classrooms. There are certain things that the management team will have to sit down and talk to policy council about and decide how to proceed on the location of those classrooms, will parents provide transportation, or will we have enough buses that we can provide transportation? Talk about the A- Talk about the ages of the children, because the ages of the children determine the staff-to-child ratio and how many adults we have to have in each classroom. And then, of course, we'll look at the number of BK-certified teachers that return to us so that we have on staff, because NC pre-K classrooms had to have a BK-certified teacher, Bertha kindergarten certified teacher, or someone that is in the process of being certified. And so that is our plan of action. And if with, if with your approval and Policy Council's approval, we'll submit this to the Office of Head Start, wait for a response, and to find out whether they accept this plan or not, and then move forward from there.
Is there a motion to approve the response of the Office of Head Start as presented?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any notes? Thank you. Will you continue with your next motion of?
A cost of living adjustment. On May eighteenth, I received a notice that our Head Start program will receive a cost of living adjustment, and that's an annual amount that is added to our, to our budget annually. And that amount was thirty-one thousand, one hundred and seven dollars. And you should have a copy of that attachment that came from the Office of Head Start in your packet of information as well. Of that thirty-one thousand, one hundred and seven dollars, we had forecasted eighteen thousand dollars that we will need to use for the increase in retirement and for insurance. And I learned today that there's an additional, there's another increase to retirement, and we figured that, when I say we, Maria Hefner and myself, we figured that that would add an additional thirty-one hundred dollars to the eighteen thousand. So to, what we would like to do is use part of that money for that increase, and then it looks like we will be able to offer our teacher assistants a dollar an hour increase on their current salaries. That has been a goal of Policy Council to improve those salary, salary, Sally can attest to that, that we have quite a bit of conversation about how low the salaries are for our teachers and teacher assistants, that they are not on the state scale. And so a goal is to move them toward the state scale. In addition, we'd like to be able to offer a dollar an hour increase to those teachers who did not receive an increase in duration funds. Duration funds were approved last year, and that was for forty children, three classrooms, and that was to extend the day from one o'clock until two-thirty or two-forty-five for forty children. And all monies that go for these increases will come from federal funds that come from the Office of Head Start, and this does not, these increases do not include funds increases for managers or for myself. This is for teachers and teacher assistants.
Is there a motion to approve, Culler is presented?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any notes? Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Macy. I will now call Mrs. Kathy Cottle up to discuss a new bid award for children nutrition and supplies.
Good evening, thank you very much. You have in your packet the new bid from the, our COOP. We are the Foothills COOP, and we consist, as you know, of Alexander County, Davie County, Stokes County, Elkhorn, Malory City, and Surrey County. Because we're all small counties, we formed a COOP to bid our food and supplies and produce. And we are also a part of the North Carolina Procurement Alliance, which encompasses almost the whole state of North Carolina. It's through the DPI State Child Nutrition Program. And we received information from our current vendor, US Foods, about two weeks before the Procurement Alliance bid, that they would not be interested in rolling over their bid. You also have in, had, I think, a copy of our milk bid, they wanted to roll that over, and we did agree to roll that over. They are not increasing the prices at all. But when you got your Foothills bid letter, we had, Cisco is the new person who had the lowest bid. They bid about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars less than the other two, Gordon Foods, which was new in US Food Service. Unfortunately, they didn't have a lowest bid for Lot Three, which is our supplies. They did for Lot One, which was the food. But we had to wait an extra week because they had to have a week to reply if they would consider just the supplies, or would they have to have both food and supplies? And Gordon and US Foods both denied that, so we are going with, with your approval with Cisco for, for that food and supplies. And I would request that you vote to accept this.
Board members, what's the pleasure?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Do you have any questions?
So whole milk, whole milk will never return, will it?
I don't think so, and as a matter of fact, they have, the state has made an, what they call it, opportunity for us to offer flavored milk in one percent as opposed to fat-free. But our kids are drinking up the fat-free chocolate milk, and whoever bids the lowest on chocolate milk is going to get the bid. We have a few kids who will choose white milk at lunch, but most of them are choosing the chocolate milk. And I, because we have to have the right fat content for the total menu, I don't foresee going back up to fat-flavored milk, because that means we'd have to reduce fat in something else, and we already are.
These regulations, these, these, these food regulations are just.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
It is good.
It's good.
The board will now enter to closed session pursuant to North Carolina Statute one four three dash three one eight, one one. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Same move.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any notes? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you for sharing with me, appreciate it.
Thanks.